Thank you. We have a motion, a very loud motion. And we have a very loud second as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or discussion? Okay, we have an agenda. First item is recognition of audience, but I don't believe we have any this evening. Is that correct, Julie? Okay, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Those items are considered routine and are adopted in one motion unless the board member, the superintendent requests that item be removed. And we do have an item to amend this evening.
I would like to, I'm gonna turn that down. Would like to amend the personnel recommendation. Jeffrey Weiss, W.E.I.S.S., we need to pull his name off. Classified personnel, you'll see his name there. So I'd like to recommend that we approve the personnel report as part of the consent agenda with Jeffrey Weiss removed.
And then I'll turn it over to Marcelle to recognize the retirement before we proceed.
Yeah, I've got several to recommend here. Melton Myron for his 30 years of service. Brian Anderson for his 29 years of service. Janice Burhart for her 15 years of service. Cheryl Boatwright for her 15 years of service. Rhonda Swall for her 23 years of service and devotion to the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so with that, with those changes and those recognitions, thank you Marcelle. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move we adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the amended personnel report as noted by Dr. Dole.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's move on. Janice.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, the next item is a report from the President of the Board of Education. And I just wanted to thank the chamber for hosting a Legislative Priorities Breakfast this last Friday. We were invited to come and share our legislative priorities with our local legislative delegation at a nice breakfast and met new board members were there, so I thank you for your attendance. It was, you know, it's always troubling to hear about the session and the expectations of the session, given the economic situation that our state finds itself in due to tax policy decisions that I would not personally have made. But it was really nice to be able to share our list of priorities and hopes for this coming session with the six legislative members that were able to attend who really share our values about strengthening public education. So just wanted to mention that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dole for the superintendent report.
Couple of quick announcements. Congratulations to both of our Lawrence Horizon Award winning teachers who were selected with the Kansas Horizon Award winners. Francis Codel at Schwagler and special ed teacher, she's a special ed teacher, and Jordan Boyd, a history teacher at Free State. First time ever that I can recall that both of our nominees, elementary and secondary, won and advanced to the state level. There's not an ultimate winner, so they, making it to that point is the end, I guess, of the recognition. But we'll go over this month for a really nice dinner and they'll be recognized. Lawrence High is again hosting a Hispanic College Fair with information provided to families in Spanish. This event begins at 5:30 on Wednesday night this week. There's a really neat fair that came out of a site council issue that came up, and I think this is the second, maybe even the third year for that activity. Variety of activities planned next week as part of the community celebration of Martin Luther King Holiday. Our schools and district offices will be closed on Monday. There is a couple of things I want to mention around that. The community breakfast Monday morning at Mecelli's. And then the school district's second annual MLK Awards presentation begins at 6:30 on Thursday evening at South. A gallery of displays and activities will be open at 5:45. And then it'll reopen after the 6:30 to about 7:30 program. We revamped that last year. Some of you may recall that that traditionally had been kind of a report on community service, which was great and fine, but we turned that into a real celebration last year. And we'll give out a number of awards for students, for adults in the community, plus some cultural events, presentations that are made. Really a nice event. And so invite board members and the public to attend. And January is School Board Recognition Month. I bet you didn't know that, but it is. With all joking aside, I want to personally thank our board members, and I know the community does as well, for their volunteer service. People don't know that. Volunteer service, no pay. You're doing a great job and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board commentary this evening? Shannon?
Thank you, Vanessa. Wanted to just make sure everybody on the board was aware that tomorrow evening, the City Commission is going to take up the agenda item regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at 31st and Haskell, on which the applicant is seeking to open a gun shop in shooting range. The Planning Commission recommended denial of that zoning change, but it does go to the City Commission tomorrow evening. The meeting starts at 5:30. I was very happy to represent the board at the Planning Commission meeting. Unfortunately, I have a conflict that I can't resolve with the meeting tomorrow evening. So I wanted to see if another board member would be interested in speaking on our behalf at the City Commission meeting. I think it's very important that we continue to express to them that we've taken an official position on this and the, we're second on the agenda, I believe. So it's likely that we will come up around 6 o'clock if the meeting is starting at 5:30, maybe a little earlier than that, depending on how long their preliminary items take during the meeting. So I have a number of notes from the Planning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to provide those to whoever might be able to be there to speak on our behalf.
I have a site council. I could probably try to slip away after. I'd love to go, but I don't know. I mean, I could slip away if nobody else is available, because I'm already gonna be out doing board stuff. Yeah.
I need to, I might be able to do it. Let me, I need to check one thing after the board meeting tonight.
Okay.
I have a conflict as well, but between the two of you.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate you can't go, because you're obviously so compelling that the Planning Commission was like, this lady knows what they're talking about.
It would be good to find out if Colby Wilson plans to speak again. He spoke on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, and I think that his comments were very well received as well, but I do think it's important for us to.
It might be good for us to just be there to answer.
To have a presence.
Yes.
And to just reiterate that we continue to have the concerns that we've raised in our official communication to them about this, so.
If, yeah, if Marcelle, if you just let me know whether or not I can go to my site council and try to get up quick and then head out.
And then if you, if you want any of the materials, I can email this to you tomorrow.
Yeah. And I can be an alternate if neither of you are available. I can try and figure something out to get there, because I do think it is important. So let me know.
I appreciate that. I have a longstanding medical appointment for one of my kids that we gotta go to, so.
And you've done a lot of work already, so we appreciate that a lot as well.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Anything further from the board? We will move on then to our first agenda item, which is a report on student wellness. We have a bunch of very dedicated lovely women coming to the microphone, including Paula Marish, Lindsay Morgan, Denise Johnson, and Crystal Hammer Schmidt.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. So as it's warming up, you introduced us, so thank you for that. As you know, we know, a lifetime of wellness begins with our youth. So again, a lifetime of wellness inspires healthy eating, environmental awareness, and fitness as a way of life. Through supportive relationships with our community organizations, coaches, chefs, parents, teachers, school leaders, and students, the district is forming partnerships and programs that provide healthy habits and opportunities to help kids learn and grow. And with us tonight, as we speak about embracing the community, we're very pleased we have the Health Department, we have the Sustainability Assistance Coordinator here, and so we're very grateful that we really do have a nice team approach in embracing school or student wellness. As we reflect on health motives of our district and community, this diagram helps to illustrate the focus is really interwoven between the classroom, lunchroom, and garden. Through hands-on experiences in our farm-to-school programs, students will have a greater connection and understanding where their food comes from by increasing local food purchases, increasing education, health focus on activities related to agriculture, food, and the environment. We know healthy bodies is healthy hearts and minds. So here are the board wellness goals that we have been focusing on this year, and Denise is going to start us off with the first and the third goal.
Thank you. I want to start off by taking a look at this slide here. And physical movement is a necessary component in education to help us move and be successful. Kids spend, on the average, of six to seven hours a day in school, and we often find that this is the time that they need to be moving. And Let's Move Active School is a national program that started by Michelle Obama in 2013. Keeping kids healthy and strong and active for 60 minutes a day will not only boost their academic performance, increase concentration and focus, and improve their classroom attendance and their behaviors. I'm very proud to share with you that all of our K-8 PE teachers have been certified in Let's Move Active School, and they serve as the champions in their buildings. We also have, K-FIT is an assessment tool through KSDE that the PE teachers use, and they share fitness grams to share the success of their students. And I'm going to ask, and I'm gonna step away back and forth to the microphone, and I told these guys I'm a teacher, so I have to move. I'm gonna ask, because part of my job is to teach physical movement, so I'm gonna do a little bit of that. So I'm gonna ask not only the board, but also people in the audience. I'm going to show you one movement, and if you'll go ahead and go on to the next slide. This is just simple, as kids sit in their chairs, and this is just a tricep push-up, an opportunity to work their tricep muscle. And those of you in the audience, please try as well. And I'll talk about this slide as you work on this. Try something, you're just gonna scoot your bottom off your chair just a little bit, and your hands are just on the side, and this is coming down your left foot. And you're gonna scoot back, and I just want you to just, just to walk down your chair. Be very careful with wheels, as you guys are up here. And try those, scoot off your chair, rest your arms for a minute. But what you're gonna see here is what 20 minutes of sitting looks like for a break. They've done research on that. This is the brain on the left. And the one on the right is actually activity, so you can see what's actually going on. Kinesthetic teaching provides creative movement for our students. To move their students, they need to be moving while we're teaching them and working through the curriculum. Simply by getting students to move, I'm gonna leave this here. Simply by getting students to move out of their seats, we encourage that. New levels of self-discovery and self-expression, and letting students experience the curriculum through their bodies. We help them make deeper emotional and interpersonal kinesthetic connections to their academics. So that's what we're working for. Okay, so I've got another one. So hold your hand up, right hand in the air. Okay, just once, just write your name. Just write your name in the air. And kids can do this with their spelling words or whatever. Now take your left foot, put your hand down. Now try to do it in cursive with your left foot. And there's all kinds of body movements. Mrs. Marish asked me not to show too many of those, but you can use, you need to be able to use your body as you're doing that. Lots of ways that you can express yourself and use your curriculum by just moving and sharing those. What I have in front of you is, as Paula stated earlier, we're very, very grateful. We live in a community that embraces health and wellness. And part of our partnership is with Safe Routes to Schools with our Health Department, and we're very proud to be a part of that group. What I want to share with you is the goal of Safe Routes to Schools is to encourage children's walking and bicycling to school by providing safety and encouragement lessons with the hope to reverse childhood obesity and inactivity. If you go to the Safe Routes to Schools for Lawrence, you can either go straight to the Health Department site, you can just Google Safe Routes to Schools Lawrence, you can find each one of our schools and the map in order to get to that school safely. So that is just one of our encouragement activities. We actually demonstrated that on our Walk to School Day. K-8 PE teachers wrote lessons this summer that they are currently implementing in the classes this school year. This spring, we're going to implement bike lessons in collaboration with Bike KC to four of our elementary schools. If you can believe this, a fleet of bikes will be brought to schools with trainers to work with 4th and 5th graders. This spring, we will be working to develop those lessons and schedule to make this happen in our elementaries. The 60 minutes of activity that we're encouraging our students to take part in also spills into our marathon clubs and our running clubs. We have marathon and running clubs at our elementaries and at our middle schools, and we recently received a grant for $15,000 to further that equity for all of our students in our buildings. So this next slide just shows you a little bit of how many kids participated. 3,615 students participated in our Walk to School on October 16th. And I have to thank many of you walked that day. Thank you so very much, board members, for doing that with us. So now if you'll stand back up, we're just gonna do a little balance activity. You can either hold your desk, or you can just hold it. And I just want you to stand here for a minute, just with one base leg, and you're gonna hold one foot out, if you can go a little bit higher. One, it works on balance, but you should also be feeling that in your hamstring muscles. So continue holding that for just a moment. As we move to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit to you about recess. You can go ahead and relax that leg and stick the other leg up in the air. And again, you can either balance, or you can try to hold it or hold on to a table. KSDE does not collect information on recess minutes across the state. The guidelines allow us two 15-minute recesses. You can take a break. Go ahead and give a little stretch. Nope, don't sit down. Little stretch. If you grab the back of your leg, try to stretch up. If you grab just the back here, then you're gonna stretch your hamstring muscles here and your quadriceps in the front, and you can switch back and forth as you listen. Like I said, the guidelines allow up to two 15-minute recess periods that count towards the minute of the school day. Individual teachers and schools can make a big difference in their students' lives by incorporating movement into the lessons, classroom, and school day. Go ahead and have a seat. Schools are realizing just how beneficial movement is to boosting academics and behaviors. Physical movement is yet another component of our personalized learning. So today, I had you, we worked on lots of different skills. So we talked about different things. You can stand up and you can move, you can do different things throughout the lesson. The goal is for us to teach our students to be self-monitors. They need to learn how to self-monitor their physical behaviors and their physical needs, not their behaviors, their physical needs as they need it. So that can take part at any part throughout the day. If they can slide off their seat when they need a little bit of something, or they can stand up and move if they need a little something throughout the course of the day. Finally, our outdoor learning environments, I can't be more proud to be able to share this with you. Investigating our outdoor learning environments in student gardens is an exciting way to connect our students with food. We've received a grant to support our Raise Bed initiatives for our elementaries, and we're currently working with school teams to build the beds, interests, and lessons. And this past summer, I worked with a team of leadership team for our gardens, and we began putting together our lessons for our gardens, matching them up with all kinds of curricular areas, but specifically with our NGSS standards, and putting those lessons in blackboard for our teachers.
So the cafeteria is a perfect place for students to connect to farm-to-school each and every day through access to local foods. Under the Healthy Living Grant, we continue to work towards increasing the number of local farmers we're buying from, and also the amount of produce that we're purchasing. Now that Cisco is our food vendor, we can easily choose those local products through Good Natured Family Farms, which is a coalition of family farms in this region. But in order for our farmers to work directly with us, we worked with our Douglas County community partners to develop procurement guidelines and a farmer application, both which are available online on our Farm-to-School page. The team met with seven farmers at Free State on December 10th to share the new guidelines, and we discussed the needs on both sides and expectations. The chart you guys see on this slide indicates the major crops that we are targeting from farmers and the volumes that we're purchasing. This information will be really valuable to our farmers so they can plan their next crops for the season. And we're looking forward for that next step, which we can meet one-on-one and plan this next year's purchase agreements for our cafeterias. As local procurement is a huge leg of farm-to-school efforts for us, the other areas in the Healthy Living Grant are focused on education and gardens outside, outdoor classrooms and gardens. This past November, our Farm-to-School team went to Denver, and we were hosted by Andy Nowak, our Slow Food partner, and he introduced us to folks from Denver Urban Gardens, which run community-based school gardens. We were met, we introduced ourselves to the Food Service Director, the Farm-to-School Coordinator, and a handful of other educators to help us support our efforts here. We hope through our continued mentoring from Slow Food, we can provide training for cooking and gardening curriculum through our garden activities. Andy also helped to share documents from Denver Public Schools that we can use as a model as we evolve our toolkit and our scorecards. Because as we build our garden teams and outdoor classrooms at each of our schools, these documents did help to navigate our next steps and give our direction. We also closely work with our stakeholders to develop a strong strategy for implementing more outdoor classrooms and supporting curriculum. And with the help of our city and other community groups, we also are able to evaluate food waste and develop a plan for an effective composting system. Another part of our Healthy Living Grant is to increase the number of students making it to farm field trips. And this month, all 4th graders will be at Slice a Bag event out at the Extension Office. And in May, all of our 2nd graders will attend Body Venture, and that hits all nutrition and health guidelines for 2nd graders. And at that event, we'll have farmers to talk to the kids about all aspects of growing, harvesting, and agriculture. So as we continue to build a strong farm-to-school program, it's vital we build these relationships with our community partners and farmers, because we don't just want to buy from the farmers, we want to make sure that they keep an active role in educating our students through these trips and activities.
I'm gonna spend the last few minutes talking about food service. I'm happy to say, the last five years, we've had lots of new nutrition stuff that we've gone over. This year, we had nothing. We stayed the same. The only new thing that came into effect is we are now required to have every food service employee with professional development. So it's really exciting to get our new employees and our current employees with just all kinds of new ideas and cooking methods. We've done that through new equipment training. We also brought in, on January 5th, we had all food service employees, brought in a national speaker, just to kind of get the new year started off right and kind of thinking positive and making sure that they are, you know, they're ambassadors for the food service program, investing in them as well. We're also working, Denise is working with student wellness groups. She's curated a wellness group from both high schools. So we've been doing taste testing, nutrition, physical fitness, and wellness are their three areas that they're looking at. So having students involved in what wellness needs to look like, food service, gardens, and all of that. So we've had some really exciting conversations with them. We've done taste testing of smoothies at Lawrence High, and we're working now to get Free State involved as well. Awards, KSDE had one of their members come through and do a smarter lunchroom makeover. Basically, that's looking at the atmosphere of the lunchroom. You know, lunchroom can be a learning place as well with low cost or no cost ways to make it more inviting, whether that's looking at what's in the cafeteria, is that, are we using that as a storage place? Are we making that inviting for the students so when they come in to eat, they are ready to eat and talk with their friends? Through that, they wanted to highlight one of our schools for the National School Lunch Week, so Schwagler Elementary was chosen as the representative that day for Dairy Day. So they brought in a dairy farmer, they brought in Casey Wolf to do an all-school assembly at the end of the day, talking about wellness, nutrition, and how it incorporates into his life, but also how it could affect the children's lives as well. We're really excited. The Healthier U.S. School Challenge, Hillcrest and Schwagler were awarded the Bronze Award this year. That included $500. You can see the banner that they have up there. And basically, once again, that's just looking at the overall health of the school through physical education, nutrition education, recess, and lunchroom. So we're hoping by the end of any year or so that all schools will have that bronze designation, and then we can go up to silver and gold on that. So we'll continue to have that areas to work on. Then we're really excited about this. From the bond, we have been able to update some kitchens and do some really exciting things, really create equity. I don't know if you guys were ever in the old Hillcrest kitchen. We literally had to move a table out of the way to get into a home-size freezer. If you've seen the kitchen now, it's really exciting what we've been able to do, and what we've been able to cook, too. We've got some kitchens that won't necessarily have all equipment in place to begin with, because it costs about $300,000 to do a full-blown kitchen. So on some of those kitchens, we put in areas that we can move that equipment as time comes. So we're really excited about those areas, just making quality food and making it accessible and ready to go and cooked on-site. So as we finish up tonight, we do have a video that we wanted to show you, just in some of the cool things that have been going on in the garden places.
I have one comment, and I just, is this the end of the presentation completely? Okay, I wanted to make sure. Well, first, wow, way to go. Like, I think that this is especially, I mean, this is really important. It's something that the board has been talking about and asking for, for a long time, early on, without a lot of resources or, you know, we just kind of wanted it to happen. But, you know, Denise, wow. Like, I really appreciate that you're in the position. I think you bring, obviously, a lot of really great energy to it. I even saw Dave doing those leg lifts earlier, and, you know, if you can motivate someone like him. But, you know, I think it's really great. Thank you for creating this position and for Paula's brainstorm on this. It's been wonderful. I feel very lucky. Yeah, I mean, seven years ago, when I joined the board and talked to Paula, I think she was as enthusiastic as I was about some of these things, but like, you know, it's hard, especially given the budget constraints and all of that. So I appreciate all of the grants that have helped. I want to mention the Community Mercantile Education Foundation and the help with Nancy O'Connor with that Hillcrest project especially. I think, you know, we live in a community where there's a lot of people willing to chip in and help and make this work, which is especially important, given that Topeka doesn't seem like they're particularly interested in funding things like this. And so, yeah, that's amazing. Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, so I certainly, I do have a practical question, but I want to kind of underscore what Vanessa said. Wow, this is, I think, much more than I am. This is, I think, much more than I imagined it could be, and so, really great job. I do have a practical question about the movement. So I can, I can see that, you know, in the elementary schools, you know, the second graders will tell you, you know, they'll do what you tell them to do. So will the board, apparently. But I'm having, I'm wondering a little bit more about the middle schools. I mean, how do you get self-conscious adolescents to, on their own, do some sort of movement? I'm curious what kind of what the strategy is.
It is a challenge. Actually, our middle schools have really taken this on, and they're doing some really, some really good stuff in the middle school. I would say the high school is a little bit more of a challenge, but it is honestly where the next goal is being set. I mean, we have two, we have two 90-minute block days, and Vanessa teaches with me during some of that time. That's a long time, long time for kiddos. So they, no matter how old you are, so that is where our next goals are set. And since I do have the PE departments as the champions, as the leaders in there, they are really helping to embrace that.
And I will say, I'm fairly impressed freshman health students, like, they kind of grumble at first, but they generally, you know, like, people want to move. Like, no one wants to sit still for 90 minutes. It's awful. And so, once you get up and move, and you recognize everyone else is making a fool of themselves, I mean, just like us, right? Even Dave participated.
Poor Dave.
It's dangerous to go to a meeting with Denise.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, and, yeah. Wow, and thank you. I'll say the same thing. Just a quick question and a comment. The question, so can you give some specific examples of how you're integrating the gardens and the exterior spaces within the science curriculum?
Sure. Well, you saw a couple of, within the science pieces. Those are, those are lessons that teachers are kind of dabbling with now, because the standards are there, but the curriculum is still working towards that. Teachers have gone out, they have done, like, for example, at Hillcrest, just using one of the standards has to do with just investigating some different ways of making the season a little longer in your garden, so they have some little tents, different things that they have, that they've put over and they've created, if you want to.
I think it's also important to know that the gardens are spaces that we can utilize for any class. I mean, we've got cooking opportunities. I had 57th graders at South harvest some sweet potatoes and learn all about their fresh herbs and cook sweet potato korma. And they can learn about business, it's teamwork that they're learning out there, just getting the fresh air, art classes. I've had a lot of different teachers approach me, asking how to do that. So it's not just fitting into the science standard, because we've got gardeners or people who are enthusiastic about our food in, like, every little corner of our school, so.
Teaching, I thought the math was very interesting, because I had students in fourth grade math that were selling perimeter. When we did area and perimeter and measurement and so forth, the students that could just sit there at their seat and do them aced it. We walk outside, and they actually had to measure perimeter, and, I mean, they didn't even know what side of the yardstick or the meter stick to be able to turn around. So honestly, just being able to implement and to work through some of those experiences have been good also.
Cool. That's great. I look forward to seeing some of the other cool, interesting things that come out of that. And then, going back to that, I guess it was an MRI of the brain image, I'm wondering if some of our legislators might be sitting too long.
That's a problem.
Should we MRI them?
We need to get Denise there.
Have them do some tricep push-ups and reach out.
Yeah. Yeah. And for, and some maybe look at this initially and think that this is kind of an extra, or, you know, that this isn't where our focus should be, but, you know, the world is moving in this direction. I mean, Fortune 500 companies, businesses, they're looking at how to do this for their employees and, as well as relative to the services that they offer. The newest building certification system on the block is the well-building standard now, and that's their well-building certification system, which covers all these things that we're talking about right here, from physical activity to food, and, you know, it's part of the U.S. Green Building Council, it comes from them. And so as they've, they initially focused on the building, and they recognize that the occupant's the next frontier, and so, I mean, this is just right in line with where the rest of the world is going. We need to go this way. Really cool.
Well, and healthy kids learn better, and we have a lot that we need to do in order to make sure that our students meet or achieve, meet or exceed the standards that we have that are rigorous and difficult. And so I think that all of these things really help ensure that kids who are active will learn. So I appreciate your guys' commitment and the district's commitment to helping. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the list is some additional good news, so yay. Approval for sale of our general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, and for that, we have Kyle Hayden and Kathy Johnson.
Dave's kind of handed out the handout for it, so I'm not sure if I can get it up on the Elmo or not. Today is the follow-up to our bond sale that you approved to go ahead and have us proceed with on December, the first board meeting in December. It was inclusive of the sale of our last part of the issue, the $92.5 million, and a refinancing of some 2006 bonds. And, you know, the market kind of did a funny thing on us at the end of last week, and Dave was on top of that, and we had a few phone calls in between. And actually, it turned out today was just a really ideal day for us to sell bonds. So I'm excited to share that information. Dave's going to kind of walk you through what happened today, what those results were. We have some significant savings that we were able to generate for the district, and we had a really good, good end result. So I'm going to let Dave do that. And I may have to talk off of your pronouns, because I can't get this turned on up there, so I apologize.
Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, I agree. I think, and I hope you'll agree, that we've got some, some good news for you here this evening. Since I was last here, let me give you a little update on what we've been up to. And when I say "we," I mean staff, us as the underwriter of the bonds and bond council. Shortly after the meeting in December, we had a rating call with Moody's, and the call went really, really well. They ended up confirming or affirming the school district's double A2 rating, and they kept your rating the same, which in this day and age is good news. They actually even told us that if a few things happen, you will actually have some upward pressure on your rating, meaning conceivably, you could get a rating upgrade. Now, the three things they mentioned were continually, continue to maintain your fund balances, something obviously within your control, continued steady, slow growth of your tax base, again, something that I think's real realistic. Item three is contin, or not continue, improvement in the funding for schools from the state. So I'm going to reserve comment on that one, but it was nice to hear that, from the rating agencies, that they felt that there could be upward pressure on your rating. Despite that last item I mentioned, that's not, typically, they haven't been saying that to a lot of school districts around the state recently. After the rating was completed, we finalized the prospectus for the issue, the preliminary official statement or offering document, and distributed that early last week to potential investors around the country. And today, we had the order period for the bonds, and the market was, was real strong. As I'm sure a lot of you have been hearing, the stock market has really been in turmoil the last few weeks, and when people aren't buying stocks, what a lot of investors will do is turn to buying bonds. The more demand there is for bonds, the lower interest rates tend to go. So that's something that was really working in our favor, as well as the school district's excellent rating, and the fact that there really hasn't been a whole lot of bonds at this point in the year in the market. So as a result, the interest rates that you were able to receive on these bonds, that we received offers for today, was considerably lower than what we had last expected. If you turn over on that handout to page one, the first thing I want to do is show you an update on the sizing of the issue. Remind you that we've got a $20.5 million new money component. That's the remaining authorization from your 2013 election. So the new money piece is $20.5 million. The refinancing component that pays off some of the 2006 bonds is $23,545 for a total bond issue size of $44,045. The other number I'd like to point out there is right here, the $2,050,000. That is the premium that we've referred to or talked about in the past, and that is the maximum amount of the premium pursuant to bond council that you can generate from this project, from this sale and use to fund construction costs. So we're pleased to report that we're able to really generate the maximum amount that you could utilize for project costs. If it's not needed for that, it can go back into the bond, it has to go back into the bond and interest fund. Flipping over onto the next page, you, this is just the total debt service for the whole issue, and if you go down to the bottom, there's a little box highlighted in yellow, you'll see the true interest cost. The total true interest overall rate on this issue is 2.327%. Last time we were here, the estimated rate we had was 2.99. You might ask how we missed it by that much. Well, last time I was here, interest rates were about at this level, and I had, just for some cushion, had put some rates up at here. Well, what ended up happening is rates went from here to here, and so that ended up resulting in about a, over a half a percentage point lower overall interest rate on the total issue. Next page is just the debt service payments on the new money portion of the issue. And on this, the new money portion, the $20.5 million, the true interest cost was 2.869, a little bit higher, because it's a longer series of bonds. I'm going to go over in a minute, kind of recap the overall results of your 2013 bond elections, but keep in mind that 2.869%. And then finally, here's the refinancing component of the bond issue, and total savings is $3,613,000. That's almost $1 million higher than we had anticipated last time. Obviously, just thrilled with that result. The to, a lot of times in our industry, when we present the savings of a refunding issue, we look at it as a percent, a present value percentage. I think I might have mentioned before, something in the 3% to 5% present value range is usually considered good. Here, we're at 13%. So I, you know, really, I think it's four to five times the level of savings that some issuers will look at as a minimum acceptable level of savings. So again, really good, real pleased with that result. That's it for the numbers or the results of the offering. Obviously, if you've got any questions about that, let me know. As far as, I did want to recap real quickly where you ended up overall, when we compare the results of this final sale and the other sales of the bonds to what was originally expected prior to the bond election. Prior to the bond election, your bond and interest fund mill levy was 10.577 mils. We had anticipated that that would not have to change, and that the new bonds would be issued at a rate of 4.5%. Well, this last issue, as I mentioned, was sold at a rate of about 2.87%. Your 2014 bonds were a little bit higher, 3.18%. Market conditions were different at the time, and your 2013 bonds were at 3.798%. Overall, if you average those out, it's an average rate of 3.35% compared to the 4.5% rate that was projected prior to the, to the election. In addition to the lower rate on the bonds, your assessed value had some 1%, 1.5% growth over these last few years, and you started getting some state aid in your bond and interest fund. What does that all mean? You know, it, right now, it appears that your mill levy and your bond and interest fund, not this budget cycle or next budget cycle, but the following budget cycle, should be able to drop by about two mils, assuming you don't add any new debt on. So rather than keeping your mill levy at 10.577 mils, it's actually all other, once all the bonds have been sold and assessed valuation grows, state aid, it looks like you're going to have experienced about a two-mil drop in your mill levy. So, obviously, good news. And the total premium that you received, as I mentioned earlier, $2,050,000 on this issue, the other $72 million of bonds that you sold generated premium of about $2.2 million. So you'll have net premium of about $4.3 million that, again, will be available for project costs or to, if not needed for that, to help provide mill levy relief. So, a lot of numbers there, but I thought, I think all of them, at least in my opinion, turned out real well.
This is great news, and will certainly help as we go into the planning process for improvements in secondary schools, especially Lawrence High, give this potential for doing something there without raising the mill levy if we choose to do that instead of decreasing it. So, yeah, any other questions or comments?
We do have also Gilman, well, Legal Counsel here, that has brought a bunch of paperwork for y'all to sign at the end of this.
I see.
So just, that'll be a part of the two motions that we need to.
Sounds good.
I have a question. I'm wondering what it would take to get Dave really excited, because this is about, this is about as good a news as anybody could have anticipated, and.
He does seem really excited.
He is smiling. He is smiling a little more than usual. Yeah.
Okay, do we want to make a motion?
I'll make the first motion. I move the board authorize the president to sign a bond purchase agreement with George K. Baum &amp; Company to sell the district's GO refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2016-A, with an interest rate of 2.327%, and providing for a net present value savings of 13.071% or gross savings of $3,613,752 on the refunded bonds.
Second.
Motion and a second, Janice? Or any discussion? No. You sure? Because this seems like, we could maybe do better. I'm kidding.
Can we vote faster? Get to vote for something so good.
Right.
Yes.
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 The motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
Have a separate motion for the second one?
We do. Would you want to make that, Chris?
Yes. I move the Board of Education adopt resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2016-A of Unified School District Number 497, Douglas County, Kansas, Lawrence, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and of interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Thank you. Chris and Shannon? Any discussion? Okay, Janice.
Yes.
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 Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so our final agenda item this evening is a discussion to finalize the characteristics for the superintendent search, and then also talk again about the timetable. I appreciate everyone getting back to Dave. After our meeting last Monday, it became clear that if we waited until after spring break, we may have a picked-over batch of superintendents, and we want to get the best one. So we decided to try and move that calendar up a little bit, so we have a better candidate pool to work with. And I assume that worked for everybody. Have we heard from Jessica? Have we heard from Jessica?
Have not heard from Jessica, but everybody else was available on the schedule that I'm going to talk about.
So we'll assume that it will work for Jessica. If it happens to not, then we'll figure out what we need to do in that case, but I'm hoping so. So, okay, so then we also want to finalize and get these five characteristics back to Tom. Marcel and I both found that we left that meeting kind of thinking, maybe we need to spend a little bit more time, and the list that came back, I think we want to maybe work a little bit more just to make sure it's exactly what our intent is. I think we had a lot of good ideas, which, thank you, Dave, for getting that original list that went up on the Butcher Block paper back to us. And so, yeah, I guess I'll, did you have something? Do you want to talk for a minute, Dave?
Actually, it's really board discussion on your characteristics and how you want to proceed. Paul is here to take some notes for me as you go through, and if you want to make changes, then I will get those changes back to Tom. I visited with Howard today, and once you have finalized these, then they will complete their process and open up the application specific to our district. There's a general application and a notification of the vacancy on their website now, but the, the application link will be direct once this is done, and by the end of the week, everything will be live, and, and people will be able to answer their specific questions on these characteristics, as he discussed with you the last time he was here.
Okay, wonderful, so
Vanessa, I'm, maybe, maybe you're about to address this. I'm kind of wondering how you're thinking about proceeding. Seven people editing content is not very efficient or effective. So did you have some thoughts about kind of how we get from this to the final version?
No. I mean, I don't have any, I was thinking we would discuss it and, and kind of figure it out as a group, so I don't have a, like a better option.
Well, I guess my suggestion would be, and I think we, you know, we can provide input, but it might be that after that input, I would be comfortable if the board officers sort of, well, you're the board officers. So, you know, kind of make the final edits and sort of get it in shape, because I think some of these need a lot of work.
Sure.
And I, you know, and I'm happy to offer my thoughts or ideas, and I think we should all do that, but rather than us trying to come up with the final version tonight with, well, actually not seven people, six people, I think it's going to be challenging.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense, and I think getting some initial kind of reaction and feedback for what you think needs work here would be helpful. Dave, when does Tom expect us to have this back so that they can attach us to the application? I know it's as soon as possible, but
I think if we have it back to him, probably by Wednesday.
Okay.
It would be safe to say it would be up and going by the end of the week. That was his commitment, anticipating it might have arrived tomorrow, but if we need a little more time, if I can get it to him Wednesday morning, probably would be good.
So, yeah, I think, Marcel, would you be okay with that if we kind of hear initial board reactions, take notes, and then maybe we can work over email to get it into it? And then, I don't know, would we have to get full, would you trust us to do it and then send it off, or would you want to look at it and approve it? Can we do that over email?
Wouldn't be able to approve anything.
Right.
Once you have actually a scheduled a board meeting.
Right.
So you would have to come back together in a, in a special meeting to approve anything, but
Or if you approve the fact that we're going to do it, would that be sufficient for your needs?
Certainly for me.
Would everyone else be okay with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, great. Would you like to start us, Rick, on comments for what you think?
Sure. Well, I mean, you know, the general comment is, we've got a lot of stuff that's redundant and not very clear. So I think one of, one of the ways to think about this was to try and, that I was thinking about it, is try and get kind of what the essence of each of these is. You know, like the first item, I think the essence of that is leadership, right? So, you know, and, you know, but then you get into all the verbiage about educational motivational leadership with the ability to incorporate a team approach. That, that seems to muddy it up rather than make it clear. But I, but I, but my sense was the, the purpose of that first one was leadership, and, you know, suggests we kind of start from there. The other one I'm not, the second one, I'm kind of not sure what that is. It's communication skills, it's be a good listener, a positive team builder, but I think that may revolve around, you know, communication skills is kind of the core, is sort of my sense for that. I think the third one is pretty clear, but, but not worded in a particularly compelling way. And, you know, and I realize I'm giving you a lot here.
Oh, no, this is fine.
Fourth one, student-centered advocate with vision dedicated to implementing programs and activities. I think that can be just kind of tightened up in terms of, you know, because what, I think, I think this was, came from what you said, which was a student-first approach.
Right, a slightly more concise and direct way of saying something, yeah.
And then, and again, the last one I'm struggling with a little bit, welcomes and embraces transparency, good, has the ability to collaborate with all stakeholders, and be visible and involved in the community. I, I guess my sense for that was, you know, involvement in the community was really kind of what we were getting at, and obviously, we want that to be in a transparent way, but again, I thought, you know, the, the purpose of that was a little unclear to me. So that's, that's kind of my initial read-through of the various items.
Okay, I appreciate that, and as you were going through them, I was thinking maybe it would be more helpful if we handled them one item at a time.
Yes.
So I apologize for making you go through all of that for me to come to that realization.
No, but, but some of them overlap, and so
Right, I agree. It is slightly challenging, because, yeah, I think that the ability to collaborate with all stakeholders is a leadership opportunity, which is that number one, I think that, so there is a lot of overlap between them. But let's kind of start with the first one, and thank you for your thoughts, Rick. What other thoughts do you have on, on that first bullet point?
Well, I guess my, my thought, and this occurred to me somewhat the night that we worked on these, but it's even more clear now, is that one and two actually repeat a lot of things, so we need to identify the core of what they're supposed to be about, and then make sure that you divide out what, what belongs in each, because they just seem a little repetitive.
Well, and I have one question that maybe you can help me with, or maybe another one of you was more aware of how these are going to be used. So as part of the application process, applicants are going to be writing about these particular bullet points for us to read, their kind of responses, but they're not really worded as questions. So are they supposed to say, like, demonstrate how you will do these things, or how, do you know how that's going to be worded on the application?
It's my understanding that once you finalize your characteristics, then Tom will draft questions that go into the application that allow the candidates to address the types of skill sets or characteristics and how they best fit those, those requirements.
I see. So these characteristics will be utilized to write a question.
Questions for the application itself. And they use AppleTrack, and it is a, it's a system that they can very easily insert however many questions are necessary, that the applicant will then address each of the things that you think are important, and, and what skill sets they bring to the application to support that need.
I have a suggestion, or just a thought. In reading these
Let's go ahead and put that out.
I think, I, as I remember, we, we started with our, we narrowed it down to our top five items, and then we took any tangential meaning of the other one through 36 numbers and kind of stuck them in there. And I kind of feel that by doing that, we diluted the five that we were seeing. So it might, just, and with your process, it might help to have the, I don't know what's a working paper, but at least have the, the five or whatever the number was that we had the cutoff, to at least maybe have the main subject point of these paragraphs, because I feel like it loses something, because then we said, well, this, you know, 19 goes with three, and 14 goes with two, and I, I not, I think the, maybe the main point was lost.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you.
Like, the working papers might be needed, and I think once you see those, you'll probably see how some of these other describing words and, and tag-on, yeah, thoughts got lumped in, but maybe the main point was lost.
So we have a bit of a deficit here, because we don't have your working papers. Tom took those with him.
Well, I would assume that we could get, like, the email that has one through, was it five we got?
Well, we have, we have all thirty.
But the way they ranked, because then we were saying, well, because I, I think I took, or like
Now, I do have
Never mind, I won't put that on you.
Couple of things, go ahead.
Oh, and I was just going to show you an example. This is from their webpage. This is a school district that they're also doing a search for, and this was this school's district's top five. If we actually went into the application, you can see what the questions look like, but they kind of use these characteristics to turn into qualifications, and there are lots, lots of different examples on their actual webpage, so as whoever's working through this, as you think about it, it may be helpful just to see kind of how they use them outside of the questioning component.
You know, I also like how these are kind of complete sentences. I feel like this is just a lot of words that kind of are related, but I think it's a little bit too much. I think, I think you're right, that in the, in the effort to kind of make sure we got it all in there, it just became this, like, big glob of things, and, and in that, we've lost a lot of clarity.
It's hard to interpret and remember what we started with, but I think, I would assume they would share one through five, and then you could probably look through and recreate, oh, this goes with this, but not lose the main point.
Right, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit, sorry for jumping in.
No, no, go ahead.
Are they going to be more like these statements that you just showed us, or are they going to be like the questions? Because the reason I ask is, if they are going to turn our statements into questions, we don't necessarily need to wordsmith them as much, but if they're going to take our statements directly and post them, I would be more inclined to make them sound really precise. Sorry to
Just from my limited research, I think they use them in both capacities. I don't know if for these other districts and Dave, or I could talk to them and see if they finalize them into these more refined sentences, but I think they use them to advertise a qualification and also to develop questions, so the qualifications and the questions kind of merge with each other.
We really probably do want them wordsmithed, to make sure that they sound exactly like what we're talking about.
I think we should be as precise as possible, just so we don't have any ambiguity on what we're asking for, so.
And I mean, is there some sort of magic number with the five qualifications? Because I guess I would rather have seven and have them be distinct than have five and have them each have, like, thirteen characteristics around each one, you know? And so, you know, if there is opportunity to increase, then let's look there. If there's not opportunity to increase, then let's cut out some of these extra characteristics.
They did say they wanted five, so they're
Well, and I think the other thing, and I, I agree that seven might be better than five, but I think there's some sense that this is already going to be a challenging application.
Sure.
And so if we add more stuff for them to address, maybe that dilutes the pool, because people don't apply. But I don't, I didn't know why five is a magic number. And, and, you know, I'm looking here, and some of these can be combined, so we may need another one to get to five.
Did you have something, Marcel?
I was, I mean, I kind of, I had followed the same kind of process that others had started here, and I mean, I agree with Shannon that I think one and two are, that, for me, those two just scream, like, I had, actually, I just relabeled it as strong management/leadership skills, and then I bullet pointed under them, and then I was going to go from there and try to make it a, you know, concise sentence based on those, but, I mean
I think the first part of it might be that, but I think this last one kind of goes to a second. That last sentence, I honestly think goes to communication rather than the leadership.
Well, for, for me, communication's part of being a strong leader, so, but, but you can separate it out. I understand, I, I see where you're coming from, but for me, it's just
Well, and looking at this, I was like, I don't know what motivational leadership skills are. And I can sort of, you know, I mean, I, I know in the sense that what that means, but that's a really awkward way to say that. So if you think the core of these first two is leadership skills, and you could kind of combine that in such a way that it's clear and concise without having to address 12 different topics within the, the context of leadership, because we want to, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
We want to give them some latitude in terms of how they want to describe their leadership skills and the experiences that they can relate to, rather, you know, rather than kind of dictating all these things. So if we could get this down to a coherent, clear sentence or two that captures the essence of it, you know, I, I think that would be much better.
Have you already taken a stab at that, Marcel?
I haven't got to the sentence yet.
Okay.
What I did was, you know, I had put the heading, and I listed bullet points, and then was kind of going to go from there.
Okay. I just didn't want to reinvent the wheel if you already had it, because it looks like you've done some pretty good work right there. Okay. What else about number one, the first bullet, beyond the fact that we probably should combine it with two and make it clearer, more coherent, and more concise?
I think that the last sentence of number five actually relates back up to one and/or two. Did we already cut, sorry, I've been over here kind of fiercely scribbling notes, so did we already go there? I mean, I, welcoming and embracing transparency was one of the things we named, and I, I felt like the, being visible and involved in the community was really, it's a different, not the same thing, right? It's more trying to capture the, the, the level of involvement and visibility there that the Lawrence community expects our superintendent to have, which I think in some ways or many ways may be above and beyond what is considered typical in a community of our size, perhaps.
I mean, I guess transparency does have a lot to do with communication and involvement, because you can't really be transparent if you're not out there.
Right.
I mean, I do, I do think that even if, like, putting the budget on the internet isn't sufficient, because then people are like, well, I didn't see it, because people don't go there. So it's really involving people and going out and talking about it with people, I think in order to meet that goal. So in that sense, I think it is kind of part of the same. But, yeah, I hear what you're saying. It is hard, because so many of them go together and overlap, so making them distinct, it's kind of like with our goals, you know, it's like, which category does fit in? And the answer is usually all of them.
All of the above. I do, I'm sorry, I do like the idea of maybe looking at what some of the other districts have, at least maybe just ideas and guidelines, and maybe that'll give us an idea of how to properly, maybe take our ideas, but put them in, in a similar fashion.
And Dave, I had a question about the equity initiatives bullet here, because I know, I, I think if we put that out there and any old applicant sees it, they might have a different view of what that word means than what our district, how our district interprets it based upon the work that we're doing with the Pacific Education Group that's really tailored to defining that in a particular way. And I know our district, on just normal application processes, when we hire a teacher or a counselor or whoever, we have as part of our application some questions that really work to kind of focus in on that, that kind of level the playing field for everyone, to help them to really get to the, to get to that issue in a way that doesn't penalize someone that might not have had the professional development that we offer at our district through PEG. So can we get a copy of those questions in order to maybe see if that might better answer this point?
We can certainly pull those up and, and get at them. I think principals spend a fair amount of time in the interview, actually teasing out some things and helping the applicant understand it's, it's not equity in a traditional sense. So I don't know that we've gotten as precise with the questions
Okay.
in our interviewing situations with, with buildings
Application.
as probably we would, we'd like to be, but I don't, some of the questions, have you seen?
And I think, well, some of the questions do get at the heart of what we do, but I also, I think the principals and hiring administrators recognize that everyone doesn't come with the, what you described, what we do with PEG, and they're looking for capacity and potential
Right, and openness.
within how they respond to those questions.
Okay.
But we can definitely, we can definitely share the one that's on our But we can definitely, we can definitely share the one that's on our general teaching application. And I can reach out, because principals use different ones at different levels and I can reach out to them and gather some there so you can see.
I think that would be helpful because I'm not certain that, that McPherson and Jacobson have quite that, that level of institutionalized knowledge that we've kind of created in order to get at that particular issue. And I want to make sure we utilize our knowledge in that area. Yeah, Rick?
So whereas I think a lot of these other items are too broad, I think this one is maybe too narrow. And I think emphasizing the equity is important. But I think we also want somebody who's committed to all the initiatives we've started. So blended learning, for example, would be, you know, it's different for, different in some sense from equity, but not completely. Because I, I, I think that we want to make sure that we have a superintendent who doesn't, you know, pays more than lip service to some of these ideas and really embraces it. So it, I mean, I wonder if there's a way to concisely but still broaden this question that captures these elements but also makes it clear that we have a number of initiatives, you know, that, that we've done. I think the district has done some really good work that we don't want to undo. Does that make sense?
It does, though I worry that we did kind of a ranking system and I get that and I believe that, but that didn't rise to my top five the way that the equity work did. And so I don't want to then go cherry picking back to our initial list that, of those things that didn't quite make it on the ranking system up to number, you know, in the top five for all of the board and then further dilute. But I mean, I get what you're saying.
And I, I think we can get at some of what you're saying through questions. Yeah, interview questions, you know, beyond, when we actually do the in-person interviews. I was, I was playing with the wording on this one a little bit. I mean, obviously, the bullet point, if you, if you go by the, the example that Anna put up of how they've used these in the past, the bullet point, I don't think there's any way we can really capture what we've been doing effectively in the bullet point. But I think that it could be worded a little bit better than this. So again, maybe getting, maybe the, the questions, maybe it's the interview questions we ask more so than this that gets at the heart of the, specifically what we're doing with PEG and beyond diversity training. But I think that, I think that, like, for example, I'm just playing with this, trying to put it in the form of, you know, a verb at the beginning. So recognizes and supports the role that the district's focus on equity plays in closing the achievement gap and increasing staff diversity would, maybe that's not exactly what we want to say, but it would be an improvement on what's there.
Right. And if you notice, there are six bullet points up here and.
So I looked at a couple while you were talking and they vary. Some, I think they give five as a target because they know some will go under and some will go over. But five is, yeah. So this one does have six.
Okay.
Vanessa, I was going to mention that number two bullet has the ability of identifying strengths, to identify strengths, et cetera. I had my notes that that was based on number three. Just, I mean, that was number three on our list. So if that helps bring back the starting point of one of those.
Okay, so bullet two related to number three, which is the good team building skills with administrators and teachers.
And I, and I do remember it was specific to teachers. And we talked about number seventeen being looped into it because that was one of mine, just being able to build trust and relationships with teachers and administrators.
Okay.
So perhaps then if we were going to add a sixth bullet, we would want to break out leadership, communication skills and team building.
So leadership, communication, team building.
Team building.
Equity.
Student-centered advocacy.
And then transparency. Is it transparency or is it community involvement? I thought value transparency made it in the top five, did it not?
It did.
Like on its own merit or because it was lumped in?
Right.
Well, no, I, I think it was in the top five, but, but again, you know, I think, I think you can fold that into other areas rather than have it as a separate point and not because it's not important.
Like what other area, communication?
Well, yeah, I mean, communication.
Communication and community.
But I see that as community as well, I mean, that's where I'm just.
Well, it's supposed to say, it's that, I think that this, Lawrence is a very different kind of community and there are expectations. And I think Rick would be the first to tell you, he was kind of surprised when he got here at the level of community involvement. So I, I saw that one as having more to do with the interaction with the community, really being comfortable being the face of the district.
Well, you could roll transparency into the communication sentence as well as the community sentence.
Well, and I really, I have to second what Rick is saying. Like, I really was surprised at the level of involvement in meetings and just community engagement, but that I saw that as a transparency type of activity, that he was getting out there, especially when I was, you know, running for office and he was out there pounding, you know, the board, the bond, rather, information, just everywhere he could get an audience. Well, maybe the way to word that then would be to say embraces transparency and develops. Because kind of what we're talking about is community trust and, and community, you know, kind of knowledge about what we're doing. So, you know, develops community trust through visibility, involvement in the community.
I think the, I, I agree. I think that the, the community trust is really what we're talking about. And, you know, part of that is, you know, embraces transparency, has a commitment to developing trust with the community or something like that.
It kind of like develops community trust and engagement because I think engagement is one of our overarching board goals. So that seems like it has been important to us for like at least like six years or so has been like one of the major goals underneath our board goals.
Maybe one of the, one of the things to think about as we're rewording these is to make sure that the words excellence, equity and engagement appear specifically in the statements in some fashion. I mean, I think they do, but to be conscious of that, that we don't edit that out somehow.
Right. Do you know, Dave, was this, these five bullets that they gave us, was this intended to be their first rough draft at it or was this intended to be their final version?
Other than wordsmithing a little bit, they think that this captures the basic areas that you developed in that group technique that he used to get to the, the five most important items that you wanted to capture. Now, there is some combination of things in there. So, you know, actually, it's, it's really more than five concepts. As you can, obviously, you've identified about eight or nine different concepts as I've been taking notes here. So breaking them back out and having six or seven probably isn't going to be a critical problem.
Right.
As, as, that allows you then to focus on leadership, communication, building community trust through engagement and transparency.
I like that.
Equity, achievement gap, diversity.
You just, okay, somebody write that down. Building community trust through engagement and transparency, that. There you go.
So we would be able to take these basic concepts that you're pulling out of these five general bullets and develop them into more singular statements, not unlike, I mean, the one that Anna has pulled up right now is done in a fashion similar to this with commas and semicolons and so forth, which makes them, there's a lot there. So you don't develop one question out of the third bullet. That's several questions if you really want to get to it. So if you were to think in terms of the five that you have here and pull out, pull out the, the basic tenants as you're doing and how we wordsmith it, frankly, I don't think Tom cares one way or the other.
Sure.
As long as he's comfortable that you're satisfied with the end product. But you took three of these things in that one statement and put them together. So it's not that you can't combine some of the things to get those concepts more clearly articulated.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, it's all there, it's clearly articulating it, it's, it's the issue. And yes, you can use semicolons and commas and so forth, but this is disorganized. And so it needs to be better organized.
Yeah, I agree completely.
I think we all do.
So if I heard you correctly, then if I were to capture one word summary of, of the items that you discussed as being kind of critical components, it would be leadership, communication, transparency, equity, achievement gap, diversity, student-centered advocacy, blended learning, collaborative with stakeholders, team building, and then the community trust engagement. Now, a couple of those obviously go together, but those were the central themes that I heard you discussing as you went through each of those five bullets.
Yeah.
Is there anything that I didn't capture in your conversation?
Yeah, I think if we reworded in order to capture those concepts more concisely with very direct language, that would be much better than this.
And if you think back to the actual words that you used, that they kind of, that, that's a shorthand version in a sense of what Vaughn wrote on the butcher paper. We can use that as a guide to help us kind of assimilate this. And I don't think it would be difficult to come up with some succinct language that would be acceptable to all of you.
Right, and I think the way that you just now put together this idea of community engagement and transparency in, in that, you know, capable of building community trust through transparency and engagement, that captures that beautifully, it's perfect, it's clear. If we can do that with each of them, and if some of them can be combined, great. If they can't, then we just have a few more bullets than we had before. Yeah, I think, I feel much better, we can do this. So is that sufficient feedback that you feel you can give to Marcel and I with? It sounds like Dave's help, he seems pretty good at this.
I think the question is, do you think it's sufficient feedback in order for you to move forward with, with better articulating these things?
I think so. Do you feel like that's enough?
I do.
And I'm good.
I'm satisfied.
Yes.
Okay.
The other piece, just to review the calendar, this has basically already been done. That was the first part of, of the calendar. Coming up this week, Julie has organized the various input meetings, starting thirteenth and fourteenth. Stakeholder group meetings on the schedule that Tom put together. And so you can see that that's pretty well laid out. They will come back in January to discuss with you the stakeholder input. Again, they're going to take your characteristics, they're going to take the input from the stakeholder meetings, and they're going to use that information then to screen the applicants to roughly ten that they think are, are most suited from their perspective to, to meet the needs that you're identifying. Then you will review all of the applications, they'll, actually, they'll review all of the applications with you on February twenty-nine, the closing date will, will remain February sixteenth. On the twenty-ninth of February, they would review with you all of that information, bring to you in particular the ten they think best represent what you're looking for. Then you would paper screen down to the number of candidates that you would choose to do in a screening interview with. That screening interview would then occur on March third and fourth, anticipating possibly as many as six initial screening interviews. There would be three on one day, three on the next. And then they would be narrowed on the fourth to your finalists, anywhere from two to three, maybe four if necessary.
You mean the seventh, right?
You would, you would have to choose your finalists on the fourth.
Oh, right.
After your last set of screening interviews, you would work a little later.
Right.
And then make your choices. And then they would come back on the seventh and eighth to have your final interview. And the way we would, excuse me, the way we would anticipate that working is that you would have a candidate who would, would go through some various stakeholder meetings internally and then meet with you over lunch on the seventh for a two-hour period of time. The next candidate would meet in the afternoon, would then have dinner with you for a two-hour period, a two-hour interview. Then the following day replicate that on the morning. Then you would have the afternoon available, if you only have three finalists, to then work with Howard and Vaughn to come to some consensus as to your final choice. Then they would take it from there in terms of contacting the finalists and letting them know status and, and beginning to then talk about the contract terms.
Can you tell me, it looks like the stakeholder group chairs, like the two scratches through. Talk to me about that.
So one of the things that they had built this around was bringing a larger group of people in to, to have some conversation with the finalists. I've structured it a little bit differently to be more consistent with the way in which we have done interviews for our superintendent, assistant superintendent, some principals, where they would have meetings with various staff groups. We can add community if we, if we want to, but it would be structured. Their concept there would be you'd have a meeting of twenty, twenty-five people that would greet and, and just kind of have a meet and greet with the individual as opposed to any meaningful time to really have an opportunity to gather a little bit of information about that person and then allow that person time to, to ask questions of that particular group, whether it was a classified group, a teacher, principal group, a central office administrative group, et cetera. So if you, if you think about, this would be your, that would be your screening interview on the third and fourth. Then this would be an example of your, the interview activities that the finalists would go through. A meeting with classified staff, LEA past presidents, current president, RSAT principals, which consists of a high school, middle school and two elementary principals, central office administrators. It can be expanded to include a community group of parents and students if, if you would like. But that would be an example of how that would be set up.
I think that would be important. I think that was one of the kind of larger selling factors that, that we were hoping that the firm could help with. So I do think it is important that we do kind of focus group, community meetings as part of that interview process.
So the community now is interacting with you in two different contexts. They're interacting in the, in the front end with the input that they're going to give Howard and Vaughn.
Next week, right.
Howard and Vaughn this week.
This week, sorry.
They have the survey that they have an opportunity to participate in.
Right.
And then there, there wouldn't be group chairs. And that's why I struck that in, in terms of this revised schedule. There's, there's really no need for group, stakeholder group chairs to come together to give information. So out of, coming out of these, what we'll call stakeholder group meetings with classified, certified and so forth, then, you know, they can provide feedback to, to the board through Howard and Vaughn that you would then use in your deliberations as you think through who you're going to select as your candidate. So you would get the benefit of that input, but it also gives the candidate an opportunity to visit with those different groups and ask questions.
So am I to understand that those constituent groups that you're talking about that would have the ability to provide input with the individuals that we've selected as semifinalists and finalists would include a community or parent group?
It could if you want. It's not set up that way currently, but it could, you know?
No, and I was just going to say, if we do that component, we would have to work through who. No, and I was just going to say, if we do that component, we would have to work through who and how
Right.
gets to be a part of that.
Right, and is that identifying that something that was originally scheduled for the 25th of January?
It could be part of that, yes.
I, I personally think that that's important and would like to continue that, but I'm open to the board's thoughts.
Yes, in, in the context of identifying chairs, that would have been part of the 25th, yes.
I mean, and I think maybe identifying group chairs is the wrong terminology considering we've already identified
Sure.
the stakeholder groups as far as teachers and classified staff and the students and that kind of thing. But I do think we will need to do some work figuring out those community members.
It would be more about identifying representatives from the, so of all of those different stakeholders that Julie identified, to make sure that we sent invitations, would be identifying
Right, a smaller group.
someone, people, representatives to, if we want to have that. I don't know, I, I guess I, I agree that it is one of the reasons why we picked them was, was their emphasis on that part of the process. So I, I think I'm, I'm with you, Vanessa, that I think we need to put that back in the schedule.
And it's easy to add that into that, instead of three, you would just simply have four groups
Right.
that would chat with each finalist, a semifinalist. Now, those would not occur in the screening interviews, you do that.
Okay, so it would just be the finalists.
It would just be the three finalists.
Sure, that makes sense.
That would have that opportunity.
The two or three.
Right.
Because we don't necessarily have to pick three, yeah.
So it would be simple to adjust that schedule and include a fourth rotation in that, in that mix.
But we will need to figure out the makeup of that group because that's, you know, we decide that, and we'd probably want to do that on the 25th of January.
Right, and on the, on the classified, we have a meet and confer group with classifieds, so that's a logical group for the classified staff. Past, current and past presidents and our SAT principals, makes sense for a building level staffing, and then central office administrators as well. It'd need a package of way of organizing that, and then add that community student group. It would be pretty, pretty simple to line that out.
And are we working with the LEA to pick the teach, the?
We've talked to the president of LEA.
Okay.
And we've used the past presidents before.
Okay.
And that's worked pretty well.
Okay.
And I think Lori was on board with that.
Okay.
If not, she'll tell me tomorrow, we meet at 1:00, so.
Sounds good. Okay, what else? We good? Okay, so then who's going to take the first stab at this list? Uni, mini, minimo, you will do it?
Okay.
Yay, all right, so then if you want to send that out to Marcelle and I, then we can both look at it and get back to you tomorrow.
Yep, I will do that. Is there anything else on our agenda?
Okay, I think that's our agenda.
Is there anything else on our agenda that we need to touch base with the board on? Is there anything else we need to touch base with the board in terms of our agenda? Fourth group. And then we'll, we'll get with Julie and Vaughn on some of the intricacies of scheduling all of the associated kinds of activities that, that will be involved in the day that the finalists are here.
Okay, wonderful.
Move to adjourn?
Yeah, sounds good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.